Welcome to the Madison City Council meeting for Monday, October 18th, 2021. We have an attendance of less than 100 city officials.
Mayor Kathy Katzenberg Perry.
Good evening.
Safety Service Director Barb Sylvester. Chief Engineer David Klop.
Here.
Jason Popil.
Present.
Redman Q. Community Development Director Samantha Walters.
Present.
Economic Development Director David Maywood.
Present.
Parks and Rec Director Steve Pedro. And... Health Department Commissioner Terry Arndt. Is there anyone present from administration that I might have missed? That's it then, President.
I don't know if he's present tonight, but I believe Justin Richard is on the call. I'd just like to offer condolences to Mr. Pedro after Wallace's brother. I know you're leaving. I would like to ask everyone in the audience, everyone on council, to please, please, please begin your mics, it's very hard for them to transcribe and for people that are listening into this, so when you're speaking, please begin your mic. Under number five on the agenda, the public can speak on any item that appear on tonight's agenda, and then again, under number 17, is where the people can speak on any item that did not appear on tonight's agenda. Roal. Kramer.
Present.
Gray.
Here.
Hernkane.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Litman.
Here.
Lombardi.
Here.
Slutus.
Here.
Sterrett.
Here.
And Thera.
Present.
Roll call of nine, present.
Thank you, Commander. Councilman Lewis.
Yes, please, sir. As we begin today's meeting, I just wanted to take a moment to honor the life of Bob Jones, who has recently tragically passed away this weekend. In thinking of him, it reminds us that as a city, we are not meeting just with officials and laws, but as citizens who give of themselves to improve our community, such as Mr. Jones did through his music and through his enrichment of our culture and our entertainment value. I'm going to take a moment to honor him and pay our respects to what he had done for our community for so many years. Our Father, our Son, and Holy Spirit be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. He wants to say our daily prayer and forgive us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and power, and glory, and all good. Amen. Our flag is the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to turn the mic over to Councilman Gray for a moment.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to give a shout out to our Madison Tiger football team. They completed a great first season, finished the first season 7-2. They got the next season this coming weekend against their rivals from the East. I want to wish them all the best of luck and know that they'll play hard and represent Madison well.
Thank you. Commander Kirk, are the messages of previous meeting transferred and open for public viewing?
Yes, they are.
Are there corrections or additions to be made?
There are none.
And then stand through the address. Kirk, number five on the agenda, where the public can come forward and speak on any topic that does appear on tonight's agenda. If you wish to do so, please state your name, address, and topic you wish to discuss, and please limit your comments to improvement to us. I never know if I gave enough time. Someone's back, we're just going to get up, but seeing them will lead into doing this ladies' business. Is there any? Okay, if you have anything you want to go Tigers. Your direction of ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 145, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Madison, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Kristen Murray to provide an economic development inducement grant to fund startup costs, including build-out equipment, et cetera, for Wolf and Wild Flower, Wild Flower, located at 54 Earring Street North, Madison, Ohio.
Councilman Sterrett.
Thank you, Madam President. First reading.
Ordinance number 145, 2021, as received, first reading. Ordinance number...
Yes, President. Sorry. We apparently don't have any audio that's transferring on our feed.
How do you know?
Mr. Richards just...
Thank you. Somebody's checking in the back. We will amend the ordinance number 146, 2021.
An ordinance approving amended golf rates for the Legends of Madison Golf Course effective beginning with the 2022 golf season, reviewing ordinance number 120, 2020, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Kramer.
Thank you, Madam President. As briefly discussed at the work session regarding this request, this has to do with the golf rates for the 2022 golf season. Director Pedro is here this evening, and he is here to speak and answer any questions and give an overview of whether this request gets... So, Mr. Pedro.
Good evening, everyone. We're just, we're trying to, we want to raise some of our rates to fall in line with the other courses in Stark County. We're getting closer. We're still a better price than most, but this year, we have over 50,000 rounds of golf this year, and more or less just to keep up with the economy, the price of doing business, as we say. I don't think we're getting out, I don't think we're outpricing, overpricing our customers.
Mr. Pedro, could you speak closer to the microphone?
That's his first time.
I know.
I don't think we're overpricing our customers, and I don't think we're too low for the rest of them, so we're just trying to keep up so we can generate revenue to golf course.
Did you know what your increases will be?
There are several. Do you have a copy of the increases, Councilman? They're on here, I can give you a copy of that as well, Miss Ison.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilman Lemon?
Yes, Mr. Pedro, based on the rate increases that you have, what is the amount of additional revenue that you would expect to be brought in from the increase? And I know it'll be an estimate because you don't know how many people will actually be golfing and what categories, et cetera, but maybe based on this year's traffic and the new rates, is there an estimate you can...
It's hard to say. This year's really been exceptional. In fact, the last two years have been extremely exceptional for golf. I think every, most golf courses will tell you that. People wanting to get outside, you know, we have the barriers and the cars that are taken down now, but people wanting to get outside, so the increase, I mean, we're, you know, I would say between $100,000 and $200,000 easy for revenue. You know, if we have a good spring, a good, you know, if it doesn't rain all year...
Weather permitting.
Yes, weather permitting. I think we have a bright future down there, and things are going well. So let's, you know, we just want to keep up, and, you know, we don't want to gouge our customers. I think we're being very fair with these prices moving forward, you know, and things are, the cost of doing business is going up every year, it seems now, whether it's to hire personnel for commodities, so we're, you know, we have to keep up with that as well.
So what would you expect to be using that increase to purchase? Is it additional, part of the additional equipment, or is it just based on personnel?
Everything at the golf course. Personnel.
Kind of goes into...
Bunkers, equipment, you know, everything's right there, so we continue to be able to do that. Again, weather permitting.
I've got one more comment if I could, Madam President. I did have a conversation with some golfers and asked them what they thought of this increase. They were leagues, some were young, some were seniors, and they said that they would think it is reasonable to expect our facility, as nice that is as it is, to be, and I had said something, you know, the increase between like $3 and $6, depending upon when that they would golf and whether they would be seniors or not. So there was no objection to that, and these were league people also. What I will relay to you is that they were asking for sand traps to be repaired, because in league play, they need to have the sand trap to be able to hit out of and some of the cart paths. So when asked about the increase, they were fine with that, but thought maybe some of those other items could be accommodated as well with the increase.
I will tell you, up until this year, we've spent about $40,000 a year on bunkers and redoing a lot of them about seven or eight a year. We have a pretty good plan. This year, we haven't been able to get a contractor to come out and do it as of yet. We're still working on that, we do it before winter. We have that money, everything's been approved, and we might have to do it in November if they can get out here and do it, so... When you think of renovation of the bunkers, don't just think of the sand, because we're tearing it out, putting new drainage in, and redoing everything. So we are going to move forward with that as soon as we get the contractors here.
Okay, I will relay that to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
So with this amended golf rates, it was approved by the Recreation Board at the October 6 meeting, and we're declaring a 5 to 0 by roll call. So are there any other questions? It does have emergency language. Seeing none, I make a motion that we waive the rules requiring three readings and bring ordinance number 146 dash 2021 forward for vote. Seconded by Councilman Gray, roll call for suspension.
Gray.
Yes.
Hernkane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Litman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Slutus.
Yes.
Sterrett.
Yes.
Thera.
Yes.
And Kramer.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Hernkane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Litman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Slutus.
Yes.
Sterrett.
Yes.
Thera.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Commander Kirk, ordinance number 146, 2021 is passed. Ordinance number 147, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Madison, Ohio, to advertise for and receive sealed bids and to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder upon the approval of the Board of Control for a new lease for golf carts at the Legends of Madison Golf Course and declaring any emergency.
Councilman Kramer.
Thank you, Madam President. This request, as stated, is for a new lease for the golf carts at the Legends of Madison Golf Course. We did receive a document stating the number of lithium batteries, golf carts, along with gas carts and additional carts. Mr. Pedro is here again to go into detail regarding this request.
This lease is actually for 2023. We were notified early, probably about three or four months ago, by a contractor that we have the lease now with, and said if we're going to renew this, we need to move forward for 2023 now because of lack of, they have to build the carts, and if we wait until October of next year, we may not have the carts for the beginning of season in 2023. Nothing will change in what we're doing now. In fact, I'll be back in a couple weeks about extending the existing lease that we have right now. They didn't tell us that until after the fact, but we're going to, we'd like to, we'd like to get this request in, and then this will not be until, budgeted until 2023. And again, it's supply and demand, if we can get our number, if we can get approved through them, we move forward. Nothing will be charged to us until we actually get those carts, but if we don't act now, we may not have those carts for 2023. And as Councilwoman Kramer stated, these are, these are up-to-date new carts, they're using lithium batteries instead of the current batteries they have now, lead acid. This should save us approximately 15% to 20% yearly on our electric bill and should increase our food beverage 15% to 30%, and that's their estimates. With these carts, they're going to have GPS. We won't have to hire a ranger, you program the GPS into the computer, and a car, I don't know if any of you golf, but some places, if you have these, they stop if you're going somewhere you're not supposed to go. Car will just start beeping and stop, you have to back up and get back on where you're supposed to be. So there, there's a lot of savings involved. There is advertising available on each cart, so we're going to hopefully generate some revenue to help pay for this new lease with them as well.
Any questions? Councilman Gray.
So you're, thank you, Madam President. So you are planning to extend the current lease through 2022?
Yes.
What is the cost of that lease?
$103,000, and that's a six, we started that six years ago.
Okay, so we'd be going from $103 to no more than $195.
I don't, I'll be honest with you, when, you know, that's the number they came out with, I really don't think we're going to get close to that, and I can promise you, we will sell those ads to make up for that difference. But we have to start somewhere, and, you know, six years ago, that was the price. We were pretty lucky to keep that for six years and actually even seven, so, you know, now, you know, again, the price of business is going up.
Okay, but this is still in the bidding standard?
Yeah, we haven't even put it out yet.
Right, okay.
There are only, there are two or three companies, there's two more than likely. Maybe the one that's fine with me, I don't, you know, it doesn't matter to us who we get, so...
And just out of curiosity, we have 80 lithium and 25 new gas, why, what's the purpose?
We don't have any more room to charge golf carts inside. The storage underneath the clubhouse, we can fit 80 electric carts in there.
Okay, so those will be the primary parts, and then...
For the most part, we, you know, we use all of them every day, just about, but especially on the weekends.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam President. Question would be on the GPS systems themselves. Again, I've spoken to a large group of golfers that golf at the Legends, some league, some not league, and most of them, not all, but most of them have a GPS system of their own, so they would not be so inclined to use the GPS system that you're proposing to have on.
It's automatic. I mean, they don't have to look at it, but it's going to show up on the screen.
Okay, okay, so my question to you is, if we had a new lease that did not have the GPS systems, would there be any cost savings, or could we have, like they were asking me, could some of the golf carts have them and some not have them? Those that wanted to use them, say there would be, you know, a ladies league who may not be as likely to have, all of them have the GPS systems, they may choose to rent a cart that would have one, but these league gentlemen who all have their own, either on their phones or have other equipment of their own, would not be so inclined to do so. Has there been any thought to maybe having both types, if there's a cost saving?
There has not, and I, I'm not familiar with that, I haven't seen that elsewhere. When we started putting this together, we just figured every cart would be the same. There's not going to, we're not going to charge you one price for one cart and then different, I mean, that would be a mess. But I think if you use, you know, personally, I'm going to use the one on the screen because it's more accurate, more than likely. There's going to be a lot of work on the course to make sure this is right, as they do with any, anytime they install those GPS systems.
And I wasn't aware that there was advertising going to be done on those.
Yes.
So I didn't have that information to share with you.
I'm going to call any other courses out, but there is one north of here, if you've been up there, they have, they have these carts, and you can order your food on the eighth hole when you come in. It's going to save time in the clubhouse, and it's more than likely going to generate more revenue for food and beverage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a follow-up question. The GPS system, is that used for range finding on the course, or is that simply to keep the carts where they're supposed to be?
Both.
Oh, it does do?
Yes.
A range finding function?
Yeah, the computer will control the cart's boundaries, and then while you're in the cart, it'll show you where you're at on each hole.
Range to your ball?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, at the center of the grid.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Kramer. Also, Mr. Pedro, is there some type of savings regarding the range, the position, your employee that may not...
We will not have to have a ranger on the course. You know, we don't have enough employees now, but we won't have to hire a ranger for the entire time we're open. We may send someone out every now and then just to take with the course, but the GPS, like as I said, you go off the path, you go off the radar, I'll call it, it'll start beeping and just shut down. You have to back up, get back into the, you know, in the fairway or in the rough, so that...
So there's a cost saving?
Yeah, there's some savings there.
What about the slow men golfers? If there's no race, who's going to move them along?
We really can't control slow men or women golfers, so we'll, you know, we will do our best with that GPS. The GPS, these systems do remind you as you're going along, you know, it'll tell you, pick up the pace, or, you know, you're playing, you're playing too slow. I don't think it's ever going to say you're playing too fast unless people in front of you complain, but they do, most of them have it. It'll, it'll put a signal up, and it may beep, but it'll, you know, it'll say, someone, whatever their name is, pick up the pace.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kramer?
Thank you, Madam President. So with this request also, it was approved by Recreation Board on October 6, with a motion 35 to 0 by the roll call. So this also has emergency language, so if there's no other questions, I make a motion that we waive the rules requiring three readings and bring ordinance number 147 dash 2021 forward for vote.
Seconded by Councilwoman Litman, roll call for suspension.
Lewis.
Yes.
Litman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Slutus.
Yes.
Sterrett.
Yes.
Thera.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Hernkane.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Litman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Slutus.
Yes.
Sterrett.
Yes.
Thera.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hernkane.
Yes.
And Lewis.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Commander Kirk, ordinance number 147, 2021 is passed. Ordinance number 148, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the director of Public Services and Safety of the city of Madison, Ohio, to enter into an agreement for a one-year renewal with Medical Mutual of Ohio for health insurance coverage for city employees affecting January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Lewis.
I'd like to open this up to see if there's anyone on council that has any further questions or discussion, and this...
Councilman Sterrett.
Just one, the urgency of the emergency language is, we have some pressure to get the contract filled. I'll redirect back to the Safety Service Director.
Thank you, Safety Service Director Ford. Thank you, Sylvester. Good evening.
Sorry. The request for emergency, emergency language, we have some deadlines we need to meet.
Yes, we do, because as you see, the application is, they are once we sign off, and they'll go back to Medical Mutual, and then they will prepare the contract and send everything to us. Then we do also, by the federal law, have to get the explanation and benefits out to all of the employees as well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Litman.
Thank you, Madam President. I was trying to look in here quickly enough. I was looking at it previously, and I thought I saw that there is a commission that we are paying to our broker of like $30,000 or $40,000. I guess I was just curious as to, is that comparable to what we would pay other brokers, or, and correct me if I'm wrong, I can't find it, of course, quickly enough, but I had thought I read something about a commission that we pay our agent. Could we maybe ask the Safety Service Director that question?
And we're seeing that is on part of the information that is here, provided by Medical Mutual.
Yes.
And basically, this is their layout, this is their, their formula that they put together when they actually come up with the rates. So what is included in there? It says administration and commission, so that is also, all includes all of the administration cost of Medical Mutual. It's not just a commission to our broker.
Do we pay that to the broker, or once we collect the premiums, then a part of that premium pays that commission to the broker?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Lombardi.
Yes, this is Sylvester. I'd like to move back to Mr. Bear's question, the necessity for the emergency language. We knew this contract was coming up, why, because why does it just give you more time for council to consider and run up through this, and we can hear you speak on it as well.
We go through the process again. Until Medical Mutual puts their co-forma together for us, they wait until they have all the claims that come in through September. Once they receive them through the, through the September date, then that's when we start the negotiations with them. So we have been having meetings, meeting with them diligently. We have the healthcare committee, which we have to vote on that, do that process, so we did have the meetings to do that as well. But that's, that's the timing issue of it. They really don't give us a renewal or even start to begin the negotiations until they get through all of the premiums that come in from the dates of time.
Councilman Lewis.
Miss Sylvester, given the question, some hesitation from council members, we have at least two weeks. We can give this first, first reading, just pass it next time. That still would be plenty of time.
That should be, it'll be okay.
Let's just do that, and that way, everybody can make sure they have their questions to answer if they feel comfortable.
We'll make it work.
First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number 148, 2021, as received, first reading. Ordinance number 149, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the Madison City Health Department to accept a grant from the Madison Rotary to fund a community baby shower for the citizens of Madison, Ohio, and declaring any emergency.
Councilman Lewis.
Yes, this is the grant that the Health Department is receiving. It is in the pool of $5,860. This is a way for them to be able to do some outreach in the community, and as Ms. Arndt spoke to last week, hoping to help curb the rise in infant mortality in the city. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing not a big motion, suspend the rules requiring three readings, green ordinance number 149 dash 2021 forward for vote.
Seconded by Councilwoman Spear, roll call for suspension.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Slutus.
Yes.
Sterrett.
Yes.
Thera.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hernkane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Litman.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Slutus.
Yes.
Sterrett.
Yes.
Thera.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Hernkane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Litman.
Yes.
And Lombardi.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Commander Kirk, ordinance number 149, 2021 is passed. Ordinance number 150, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the Madison City Health Department to accept a federal workforce development grant from the Stark County Health Department and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Lewis.
First reading.
Thank you, ordinance number 150, 2021, as received, first reading. Ordinance number 151, 2021.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the $1235 Community Health Services Fund for the year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring any emergency.
Councilman Lewis.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to call forward Mrs. Terry Arndt.
Thank you, Sergeant. Okay. Counselor Lewis?
As I make the motion that we suspend the rules requiring pre-readings, bring orders number 151 dash 2021 forward for a vote.
Secondly, by Councilman Gray, roll call for suspension.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Hearn Kane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
And Slutes?
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Hearn Kane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
And Slutes?
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Hearn Kane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Slutes?
Yes.
And Sterrett?
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam President. Orders number 151, 2021 has passed. Orders number 152, 2021.
In order to make certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1203 Lincoln Way Struts Gate Fund for the year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes, this is a $50,000 appropriation, and it comes from the second part of a grant that we have received that was given to us for this project. And the money will be used to pay invoices that are existing from the project. Are there any questions or discussions? I make the motion that we suspend the rules requiring pre-readings, bring orders number 152 dash 2021 forward for a vote.
Secondly, by Councilman Starett, roll call for suspension.
Kramer?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Hearn Kane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Slutes?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
And Sterrett?
No.
A yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Gray?
Yes.
Hearn Kane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Slutes?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Sterrett?
No.
And Kramer?
Yes.
A yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam President. Orders number 152, 2021 has passed. Orders number 153, 2021.
In order to make certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1234 Parks and Recreation Fund for the letters of Masson Golf Course for the year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Pedro? I'm sorry, may I call Mr. Pedro? You weren't here to explain this, so if you could explain this, speak for us.
Yeah, this is just to get us to the end of the year. We're using obviously more golf carts, our utilities are up. We're kind of under budgeted, didn't expect. Don't want to say we didn't expect to have a great year, but things have really been going well. We just want to get through the end of the year, wanting to. And if the weather holds, which it seems like it's turning out, if we get another good week or two, we're going to be open, using our golf carts.
Anyone else? Counselor Lewis?
I make the motion that we suspend the rules requiring pre-readings, bring orders number 153 dash 2021 forward for a vote.
Secondly, by Councilman Gray, roll call for suspension.
Hearn Kane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Slutes?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Slutes?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Hearn Kane?
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam President. Orders number 153, 2021 has passed. Orders number 154, 2021.
In order to terminate the contract for city engineer services between OHM advisors in the City of Masson, Ohio, effective upon the hiring of a full-time city engineer no later than June 1st, 2022.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Hi. So, Counselor Lewis, how are you?
Nine committees, so. So what would I do? I'm confused.
Have we, 154?
Yeah, so the noncommittee, is it, are you giving it to me to assign to a committee or?
We put you down, be your president pro tempore.
Okay, well then, according to... Hold on a second. Rule 28, all noncommittee sponsored ordinances, resolutions, appear on the agenda for council action shall be given first read only. And unless otherwise ordered by council, be referred by the presiding officer to the appropriate committee. I guess my question is, who's the presiding officer? You, I would assume, or me? To be given to, it has to be assigned to a committee.
What committee would you think it would go on?
I personally would think, I was looking at it, and I know that some people were thinking possibly finance, but I actually think it falls under rules of courts. Because there is no financial component to this. It's actually speaking to the manpower of the city. So I would assume, since it says in our rules that all matters which shall be referred to the rules of courts, city manpower, planning, it seems like a manpower issue, it's good rules of courts.
Mr. Gray?
Yes. Pardon?
Do you agree with that?
Yes, since it deals with manpower, I would guess I would agree.
Counselor Gray?
One more question. Also, according to rule number 28, it says that all noncommittee sponsored ordinances are, or it says any two members of council may sponsor an ordinance or resolution, have it placed on the agenda for council if such a legislation is sponsored by two members, both not of the appropriate sponsoring committee. Since this is a rules and courts piece, Mr. Hearn Kane is on rules and courts, so therefore rule 28 cannot be used. And this would have to be sent for request of legislation to be discussed in the next court session.
Counselor Hearn Kane?
Thank you, Madam President. I disagree with Mr. Lewis's assessment. Councilman Lombardi and I signed this, and we are both not of the sponsoring committee. It doesn't say that one can't.
Tell me, call on Mr. Richard?
I'm going to use this lockdown. Mark, I think I gave him one off. I sent the request. It's how we do it.
Mr. Richard, are you with us?
Yes, you have them, I can hear you now.
Okay. Would you care to clarify? Who is more correct, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Hearn Kane, in their interpretation of rule 28?
You know, I'm only getting about every other word. It seems that, is that you, not person, probably the lighting officer.
So I can assign it to him, okay?
Yes.
And is it okay that Mr. Hearn Kane is on the committee and going to assign it to, and Mr. Lombardi is not?
Um, it's just you now on the same committee. I don't see whether it excludes one person from being on the committee.
So it's okay as it?
Yes, but just give it first read, of course.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gray, this will be assigned to your rules and courts.
All right, we'll give it first read.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Orders number 154, 2021 has received first read. Unfinished business. We have been discussing a television cart to be used here at council. Diane did get a credit card, so Mr. Lombardi is going to be purchasing that for us, and we should have it here relatively soon. Anyone else have anything under unfinished business? Starett?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. I wanted to let you know concerning the ordinance number 154, noncommittee ordinance, that I was in communication today with Senator Shering, and he sent me an email talking about that he is working diligently, and he says attached is the city engineer amendment that addresses your situation in Masson. The amendment was drafted with the cooperation and advice of the Ohio Senate Legal Council. It also has the support of the Ohio Municipal League. I plan on amending it into a bill that is moving in the General Assembly accordingly, expediting its enactment into law. So I just wanted to let you know, he has been working on this for a long time, and he has revised the amendment, and has the Senate Legal Council help draft it, and the Ohio Municipal League is supporting it. So as soon as he gets that passed, we'll let you know. But that would allow for OHO to represent our city in all aspects. So I'll be able to give you an update as soon as it's passed.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yes, I would just ask, you'd said that that has been in the works for quite a while. Why now does he expect it to be passed more sooner than later, when this has already been something that's been underway for quite some time?
Well, as you know, we all just went through COVID, and so they have a lot of important things in front of them. This was a, it was a priority, but it went to the back of the list, because they had other priorities that they had to handle. And he also had to work with the legal counsel to get the verbiage correct.
Did he give us any timeline on when he would think that that would be something that was going to be presented?
He did not.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Counselor Starett?
Thank you, Madam President. So the law now says that we can't do it, because I understand that we're not supposed to do it. But they're trying to amend it so that we may be able to do it. But in the meantime, this committee, this legislation, these lines, we should be conceding her own anyway.
Point of order, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut off Mr. Bear, but this was given first read, there's no more discussion this evening. You didn't get a chance to discuss it because the way it was presented at council, it's only lost to first read and no discussion.
We can discuss it in the work session if that's okay, Mr. Bear?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else? Any petitions and general investigations?
Yes, we have a request for a stock exchange of a liquor license for Speedway LLC, doing business at Speedway 9290, located at 906 Lincoln Way East, Masson, Ohio, 44646. Permit classes are C1 and C2, and is located in Ward 1.
Counselor Lombardi, did you get a copy of this?
Yes, I did, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Are there the bills, Councilmen, please?
Yes, we have a bill in the amount of $127 payable to U.S. Bank Equipment Finance for our October payment for our copium.
Counselor Lewis?
I make the motion to pay the bills.
Secondly, by Councilman Starett, roll call.
Litman?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Slutes?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Hearn Kane?
Yes.
And Lewis?
Yes.
Nine yes to pay the bills.
Thank you, Madam President. The bills will be paid and charged to their proper accounts. Are there any reports of state officials?
Yes, we have the treasurer's report for September 2021, and the mayor's report for September 2021.
Thank you. Our next work session will be next Monday, the 25th, at 6:30. Resolutions requested council members, Councilman Lewis?
Just want to point out that we should all receive a paper version of the budget. Diane was kind, also give last year's budget, thank Diane. But I would also like formally request of the administration, if we can get the, that side-by-side pamphlet sent all on the same, do you know what I'm referencing?
I do.
It's where we got the last year's budget, last year's actual, and then next year's budget, all in the same front page. I would appreciate if we can have that as soon as possible.
Counselor Starett said she thinks we have that.
That's the 202021 that you're looking at?
No, behind it, I mean it.
2021.
Initial 2020 budget, supplement 2020, next year budget. Is that not on the table?
That's probably what.
Oh, wait, yeah, stop, yeah, okay, took me a minute. I take all of that.
Anyone else? All right, call the calendar, there's nothing to read, orders for the resolutions. Orders number 138, 2021.
In order to make certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1203 Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program Fund, for the year ending December 31st, 2021.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes. I want to verify which one is which. I believe this one is not the one that has the guest building in it. Someone correct me if I'm incorrect. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing I make the motion that we bring orders number 138 dash 2021 forward for a vote.
Secondly, by Councilman Gray, roll call for passage.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Slutes?
Yes.
Sterrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Starrett?
What is this about? You said it's not about something, what is it about?
This is the general C D B G budget that we've been discussing for the past six weeks. The other one has, is a coronavirus C D B G budget that includes guests, we have to remove several ones.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Hernkane?
Abstain.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Lick.
Yes.
Eight yes and one abstention from, for passage.
Thank you, ordinance number 138, 2021, as passed. Ordinance number 139, 2021.
And ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1203 Community Development Block Grant, C D B G Program Fund, for the year ending December 31st, 2021.
Councilman Lewis?
I will go for discussion.
Councilman Litman?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that in prior work sessions, I had suggested maybe looking at another thought before spending the $250,000 in a building that, in my opinion, according to these plans, are not, is not configured the way that it would be most, I'll say, user-friendly, or more able to be used than just what it's currently being used for. I did have a meeting for the Historical Preservation Commission on Thursday, so it gave me an opportunity to speak with John Picard, who actually drafted the plans, as well as view the property one more time. He did relay to me that, you know, based on our area in between the municipal building and what looks to be, you know, a more green area to the, sort of the north of the building, it is landlocked, that we would not be able to expand much further beyond that footprint. But as you know, that building extends further back onto that property, that it houses an office, it houses a conference room that is currently being used as some storage slash meeting area. The plans themselves then put two restrooms in between the conference center, or conference room, and our furnace room, where our servers are located, and then further back is a classroom and the garage. The only reason I'm kind of going through that is because in prior conversations, it was, you know, we have a 3,000 square foot building there, and in order to erect another building, 3,000 square feet that is tornado-proof or secure, would be a million dollars plus. When I spoke with John Picard, he indicated that, you know, these plans were put together within the constraints of, you know, what administration wanted and what the judges wanted. But had he had, and he said like a blank slate, even in that confined area, that that would not be the building that he would construct. Also, conversation was, how many people did our, or is our Duncan Plaza to be able to accommodate? And he very proudly said, well, up to 2,000 or 3,000 people. Which is, you know, what I can, I can look forward to, I guess, as time goes on, more people hopefully come down and use the Duncan Plaza. But we literally will have one men's restroom and two ladies' restrooms to accommodate what facility we put in that is to accommodate thousands of people. Now, we're not always going to have thousands of people. We would more than likely have hundreds of people. But still, as we spoke, it was, well, you know, that the two restrooms are not going to be able to accommodate these types of events. So more than likely, porta-potties would have to be brought in anyway. So I guess what I would like to suggest is that we look at, not to say that the new building is going to be for sure the way we want to go, but I think that looking at it in more detail beyond the constraints of these are the walls we have to design within, and looking at that if we expect our Duncan Plaza to attract the folks that we want it to, in the hundreds, up to thousands of people, we're going to need more than one men's restroom and two ladies' restrooms to accommodate that anyway. So why would we spend $250,000 on a, a, a Band-Aid, if you will? I, I guess I would just like to have the opportunity, and this council to have the opportunity, to look at other options in more detail. I think that, and I've had a conversation with Mr. Malley over the weekend, and asked, you know, we, we know that Jackson has a facility up there as well, and they do have some permanent restrooms also, but when, you know, when we talked about how many restrooms do they have to accommodate their large park and amphitheater and facility area, we don't know. So I guess I'm thinking that if we could postpone this vote, not on the entire thing perhaps, but maybe separating it out, or, or at least look at, be able to look at other, other options in more detail. Again, because, you know, Mr. Day was there as well, past architect, and he had some great ideas. He said, you know what I would do, is construct a conference center, similar to what, you know, I had said previously, but maybe put that in a way that it overlooks our beautiful plaza. And I know that, again, the judges were saying, I don't want any disruption, I don't want any change, and I certainly don't want to offend anyone either. I guess I'm just looking at, trying to look very, I'll say narrowly, into what do I think is best for the city at this point. I don't think we have enough information at this point to be able to determine if this is the best route or not. And what we actually need to have as that building, as being tornado-proof, because I know that, you know, that was one of the conversations as well. Don't you want to have a tornado-proof building? Well, I would say, what needs to be a secure building? Does the conference room need to be a secure building? Does the classroom need to be secure? Does the garage need to be secure? I don't know, but I was, I would guess not, that they don't have to have block walls, that we might not be looking at, you know, construction of, reconstruction of a 3,000 square foot building. I know as Kramer was asking the other work session, our server. Why is our server next to our buildings if there is a tornado coming or a catastrophe that occurs? Our servers are directly next to our municipal building. Again, I don't know the answers to those questions, but maybe, you know, discussing, are there, should we have our servers in a different location other than right next to our municipal building? And then maybe that is something that we need to consider when we're looking at a new construction, or ideas of what we can do with this area within the constraints that we have of, of the land-locking, if you will. Long-winded, I know, I apologize, but I did want to relay the conversations that I had, as well as, you know, maybe suggest that we look at in more detail other, other options. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Before we call Mr. Walters up there, is there anyone else in council that has questions? Mr. Garrett?
Yes, I tend to agree with most everything that Mrs. said. We, you know, we're looking at one idea, with one suggestion of what to do with this. And it's kind of narrow, and it's very expensive. I think with, with our due diligence, we would, we would need the help of the citizens to make sure that we are getting the most back for our, for the grant. But I'm still, I think there's more research needs to be done here, and more options. Thank you.
Councilman Kramer?
I guess I'll take pause with a few statements Mrs. Litman stated. I would think if Mr. Picard was the architect to pick these drawings with input from the judges and administration, I guess I need clarification that he thinks this isn't the best, the most efficient plan yet. If he had other ideas that would meet both of the expectations, but in a manner that would, you know, would fit into that footprint. Because, yes, I'm not willing to demolish and build. I would like to use that building, but I guess, I, I, that the statement that he would not diagram it, he would not design it that way, is, is concerning to me.
Councilman Litman?
I did want to say, I asked him if he would be willing to come and talk to us directly, and he said yes.
Anyone else? Ms. Walters, did you want to speak?
Yes, good evening. Given that the facts about the restrooms, there are, would be two stalls in each restroom, which I would, you know, equate to, I guess, the equivalent of four quarter miles that we do rent at this time. As far as the conversation with Mr. Picard, whether you're aware, I was on the office bill, I was not present at the meeting, but I did say that, excuse me, Mr. Picard, you know, not being here to clarify, he is the one that did the drawings, so I can't imagine he'd be unhappy with them. And I know that Barb had a couple things that she wanted to add, but I did want her to write council that, when we allocated this money, and this council approved the budget, we did so because we would have lost the grant money, and it would have gone to another community, that's, we were working on a deadline, we saw the need there, it was a qualified expense, it did not get approved by HUD. So as far as the funding goes, and I believe that you got the ratio that Barb had set up, about the million dollars, so I would say that it's a wise use of funding, you know, 250,000 versus the million dollars, but.
Councilman Lewis?
I just want to follow up, that this, this particular ordinance is bigger than just the 250, we have other pieces on it as well.
Yes, that is correct.
So we have, ennobled on this, but also be voting down all of those things, and we would be losing not only the 250, but we'd also be losing the other benefits that this particular grant would be bringing our city.
Would you include, so cleaning services for the formula shelter, and funding for the Salvation Army, different things like that? I could not tell you how it works if it is voted down, because HUD has approved the plan, since council had previously approved the plan as well, so I, I, that's an unprecedented territory that we have not been in before. Barb, did you have something that you wanted to add?
I just wanted to, actually, I just wanted to point that out, that, I mean, there's more to this than just this one project. I understand that we now have some different opinions, and people are making excellent points, but, I mean, are we at a point now where we're going to just risk losing all the funding because in the last hour, we decided we wanted to have some more discussion about it? Because we might lose it all. At that point, I'm concerned.
Councilman Starrett?
That was going to be what I was going to ask, Ms. Walters, is, is there even a process to go back to HUD and reallocate this $250,000 funding anywhere, or since this budget has been approved, we have to resubmit everything? What is the process, do we know?
There is always an option to amend the plan. However, with the COVID money, we are on a deadline for obligation, so we didn't, you know, we didn't need that deadline to obligate the initial funding that the city had received. And I would have to explore that a little bit further.
Councilman Hernkane?
Thank you, Madam President. To Mr. Lewis's point, I would think that should this ordinance be voted down this evening, a new legislation request could be written for the three remaining items, and then we can, as Ms. Walters said, the amendment process to reallocate that $250,000. Thank you.
Councilman Kramer?
I need clarification, Ms. Walters, when you said, you submitted the plan. Yes. Is that the design, or is that the plan that we're going to renovate this building?
That is the entire action plan for the funding that is in front of you?
So it's not the design? So we're not talking about possibly voting down the renovation? We may not, we may want to see improvements of the possible design. I, I would like to have Mr. Picard, for him to clarify exactly his statements to Mrs. Litman. Because if, if he doesn't feel that this is the best design for the city, for that structure, I would like to know why he designed it this way, and why not advise it to the two departments? I do not want to turn this money down, but I want to get some type of, of better understanding.
Councilman Litman?
I have two comments. First of all, when we are looking at the other three items on this request for legislation, I know in the past, we split them out, and had, going back to maybe creating new legislation, perhaps tabling this new legislation that would split them apart, the 250 being on one, the remaining three being on another, we could get the three that are the Conquest, Family Living Center, Salvation Army, Downtown Street Improvement, the rest of those approved and on their way. And then I would agree with Mrs. Kramer, that, you know, if, if we could look at those dollars being spent toward a renovation of this building, or, you know, maybe a, a partial reconstruction of this renovation, and not have to turn away those dollars, I think that would be definitely beneficial as well. I don't want to lose these dollars either, but I know if we put $250,000 in a building that we're not going to change it, it'll never change going forward. It will have the lipstick-on-a-pig kind of look to it instead of what it could potentially be down the road with a few more dollars, perhaps instead of two restrooms, and when I said two ladies' restrooms, there are two commodes in the ladies' restroom on the drawings, one commode on the men's side with a urinal. So when I'm looking at what, what should we be able to accommodate with, you know, that, I guess I can't see thousands of people trying, waiting in line for two restrooms. We might as well, you know, go the porta-potty route, when we would likely have to do that anyway for any large crowds that we would be anticipating to entertain down there anyway. And second point I want to make is I do want restrooms down there, and I'm only suggesting to look further into options, other options, for that 250,000 to either go toward or to assist with, when I don't think that two is enough. I'd be looking for more to be able to accommodate the types of crowds that we hope that our Duncan Plaza is going to entertain. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Madam President. One thing, first of all, I think that Mr. Picard might take issue with the lipstick-on-a-pig comment, but anyway.
I said it to him as well.
If I heard you correctly, you said that he said, if he had a clean slate, this would be the way, this wouldn't be the way he designs.
That's correct.
But he understands he doesn't have a clean slate, he had to work with the, within the confines of the current building footprint.
Correct.
And a lot of the, the structure of the building, so that he managed a secure, tornado-proof building. So I think that Mr. Picard probably would be proud of his design, given the constraints that he has, or had, and, so I think that's one of the issues, but I don't know that, that we would necessarily have to consider, or that we could even consider tearing it completely down. I think we have to work with what we've got here, and I think as far as designs go, I'm okay with the design as it is. I also want to mention, there are other restroom facilities available to Duncan Plaza visitors in those, in the police department. I know they're not ADA accessible, not handicap accessible. They are, they are, so there are other restroom facilities there as well. So it's not like we're talking too total to the entire plaza.
Councilman Starrett?
My concern is, with talk of separating the question, separating out just this $250,000, we don't even know, since we're operating under the contract of HUD funding, if we can't do that, and I think that would go rushing back to administration. I don't know if we can accept and appropriate certain dollars and not other dollars, considering this is planned and approved by HUD. I'm not sure if we have to resubmit everything before we can attempt to give dollars, or, I'm not sure if we can choose and say, we're going to accept this money, but not this, because we've already submitted the plan and pool of HUD. So I think that's something we would have to get clarification from HUD before we decided to do that.
Mr. Lombardi, did you have a question earlier?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis?
I'm ready to just make the motion to put it up for vote, and we're let it come, or we're let it go, and the administration will attest accordingly. So with that said, I made the motion that we bring ordinance number 139 dash 2021 forward.
I'm making. So, I know that administration wants to speak, you're still okay, we'll just go through this. Okay? Second?
Third reading.
Oh, third reading? Third reading, roll call, full passage.
Sluice?
No.
Starrett?
Yes.
Starrett?
No.
Kramer?
No.
Ray?
No.
Hernkane?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Litman?
No.
No.
And Lombardi?
No.
Seven no and two yes.
Ordinance number 139-2021 has passed. On CDVG ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance number 141-2021.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of the City of Masslin, Ohio, to enter into an annexation agreement with Perry Township, Starke County, Ohio, for the annexation of persons number 4301532, 4301533, and 4301534.
Councilman Starett?
Second reading.
Order number 141-2021 has received second reading. Ordinance number 142-2021.
An ordinance amending section 9, 43.05, stormwater fee collection of the codified ordinances of the City of Masslin, Ohio.
Councilman Hernkane?
Thank you, Madam President. Second reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number 142-2021 has received second reading. Ordinance number 143-2021.
An ordinance amending the rules of Masslin City Council by amending rule 19 of section 121.02, Rules of Council of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Masslin, Ohio.
Councilman Ray?
Second reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number 143-2021 has received second reading. Ordinance number 144-2021.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1238 Probation Services Fund, for the year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring annihilation.
Councilman Lewis?
Second reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number 144-2021 has received second reading. Order number 17 on the agenda, where you want the audience to be on board and speak on any topic that did not appear on tonight's agenda. If you must do so, please state your name, address, topic you wish to discuss, and please open your comments to the committee.
Hi, Kathy Whipper, 2100 Championship Circle in Masslin. The two-day work that was done on the pond, there's two issues. Jason and Mr. Lewis, did you two ever go out and take a look at all that work after it was done? I don't think so. Jill did, though. I just don't understand why you were at the house once and you walked around and looked with us, and supposedly you were supposed to take a look at it, and I don't know why you guys are just thinking that this is nothing for us. We don't appreciate it at all. But just to let you know, still issues. Thank you.
Kathy? Anyone else? Same then, Councilman Lewis?
I'd like to make a motion for a turn.
Make it by Councilman Lombardi.